Welcome, everyone, to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees Meeting for February the 24th, 2016. We'll begin, as we always do, with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to borrow, actually, a moment of silence from another friend here on the West Side where he posted "The West Side Greaves." And I thought, wow, that really kind of says it all for the kind of weeks we've had in the last couple of weeks. And that is, we're grieving the loss of one Pat Hart from Eagle Savings and Loan, one Bernie Stowe, great elder guy, great West Sider from Cincinnati Reds locker room, and at last, we've, we lost Chris Belsas. He was the youngest son of the Price Hill Chili family. So I'm borrowing this line, the West Side has had a tough, tough couple of weeks, and we grieve for them and their families and all those who mourn their loss. A moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll open the meeting with motions for consideration. Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-23, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting held on February 10th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-023 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. I second that motion because trustee Sturts was not with us during that meeting.
Motion 2016-24, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-024 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-25, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending February 16, 2016.
I move motion 2016-025 to approve payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-26, approve the Director of Parks and Recreation to participate in the academic internship program unpaid with Mount St. Joseph University for student Megan Miller for the pay period of March 2016 through June 2016, where the student will work on various department projects involving horticulture, grant research, and comprehensive planning.
I've made motion 2016-026 to approve the Director of Parks and Recreation to participate in the academic internship program.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes. I have no presentations this evening. Trustee correspondence, trustee Oswald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Sturts.
Yes, we were, I was contacted by Paint the Town, which they go to neighborhoods and paint houses for people. It was found and, well, they went out and looked, Catherine and I believe Tom went out and looked, and we had no blighted, for lack of any other word, areas that needed this help. So I want to thank all of our citizens for keeping your houses up and, and just making us proud that we are the township that we are.
Thank you. I had one resident inquiry requiring information on open burns. I do have a meeting with Chief Campbell, and I think with the upcoming spring season and people getting rid of a lot of their, their yard trash, we'll probably just have the fire department given a, you know, a complete presentation on what the rulings are for open burns in the township. That's all right with Chief? Good, I got the thumbs up. All right, that's all I have tonight. Report from fiscal officer, Mr. Looby.
Today, we submitted the annual financial statements to the State Auditor's Office, so that takes care of our annual filing, that's all taken care of. And also shortly, we're going to hear from one of our Fab Board members. But at this time, I'd like Mr. Landrum to give a little, little background as far as what he's been working on with Lieutenant Braun and Lieutenant McEluso.
Yes, also, we've been working, of course, during the budget process, and actually during the last levy cycle of the police department. We worked with the Police Department Chief Howarth as well, with the fact that if the levy passed, how long it would last, and, you know, of course, it was a five-year levy. But it was one of those things that where we felt if things went our way as far as being able to save, being able to save, you know, Chief Howarth and, and the lieutenants as well, and everybody at the police department are very, very frugal, which we're grateful for. And because of that, we have now been able to, with Lieutenant Mack and Lieutenant Braun, we've been able to do our five-year projection with the Fab Board presenting it to the Fab. Jeff and Joe did a very good job presenting it to the Fab Board, and with that understanding that this possible, and this would be a board decision, of course. It's not a Fab decision, but it's a Board of Trustees decision. It is looking like, and this is what Dale Weiskir's Fab going to present their findings and recommendations from Fab to the Board, but it is looking like we would be able to, under the current levy cycle, be able to add additional officers to the police department and still be able to maintain the five-year levy projection. This was brought up during the levy cycle, during the levy presentation, that this was very hopeful. We actually, during the levy, when we were running it, many people wanted us to do slightly higher levy because they wanted, you know, upfront officers, additional officers. We had felt that we didn't want to risk the additional levy amount, but felt that if we were very conservative and really stretched the dollars, we may be getting, you know, get a year, year and a half or so into the levy cycle and be able to do that. We are now at that point in doing our projection after last year. We're doing our projections for this year already. We already know what our health insurance is for this year, and, you know, some key figures that we already are aware of. So with that said, it is the analysis that, and I don't want to steal Dale's thunder here, but the analysis of the five-year projection, the police department did present to Fab several different, you know, what the cost of one additional officer, two additional officer, three additional officers, what those costs would do and what it would do for the five-year span, what it looks like. So it is looking like, and Dale, if you would come up, please, I'll let Dale give the end, that's a little of the background, just to know that, in actuality, just for, I'll do a plug for Fab. We did parks last time, and we're skipping March, Doug, Chief Campbell, we're skipping March, so fire is going to go in April, and then Public Works in May. So we're looking at all five-year projections, but specifically this time for the police department, we see an opportunity to enhance our services to our residents, and with that, I'll let Dale give their findings.
As Administrator Landrum said, we were presented this in January, and everybody took the copies and looked at it, and then in the last month, we did make a motion about, about the police, this five-year plan. And that is, the Financial Advisory Board has reviewed the police budget projections as presented by Lieutenant Braun and Lieutenant McEluso. To the best of our knowledge, the budget projections appear reasonable, and the projects and projects the ability of the police fund to support the addition of up to two additional officers. So after looking at that, that's, passed unanimously, did a Fab.
And we have no part-time officers, so these will be full-time officers?
Full-time officers.
Regular patrol? Okay. Dale, thank you, and the rest of the Fab members for that analysis and going through these numbers. I know we, we talked about these early when we set the levy amount, and, yeah, I'm very pleased. I think trustee Oswald has a question for you.
Sure. The only issue is, obviously, Jim Howarth always talks about the unknown cost of the Hamilton County Communication Center, and that going up. With your recommendation that we would have enough for the two officers, if those costs increase, are we still going to be okay on the five-year?
We should be, we should be fine, up to two additional officers.
Even if the?
Even if that goes up.
Okay.
If you really look at it, the number of calls have decreased because of their job of what they're doing, so they're calling more to the, to our direct line than to the 911 number.
Okay, thank you.
So it's good.
Okay. Thank you, Dale.
Any other things?
Of course, we were all concerned, and it's in the news daily about the drug epidemic, and so I think the opportunity for Delhi to have two more officers on the street, of course, it won't be a cure-all, will it, Jeff? No. But it'll sure help in our, in our war against drugs and pushers and users and everyone that ends up involved with it. So, thank you, Dale. Thanks, Pete. Thank you, Jeff. And I guess Mac isn't here, but Lieutenant McEluso as well. We'll take this under consideration. The consideration is to add two full-time police officers to Delhi Township. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Good. Okay. All right. Public hearings, no, Public Works. This is Ron Ripiger, Public Works Director.
Thanks, trustee Seavy. This is a public hearing to notify the property owners of the necessary repairs to be made in the right of way. Over 95 letters were, have been mailed out to inform the residents of the public hearing, their estimated costs, and how our sidewalk program works. According to our township sidewalk policy, the homeowner has the option of either repairing it themselves or having it done in connection with our yearly rehabilitation street project. If the township repairs and sidewalks and/or apron, you will receive the bill and the, when the project is complete, it'll probably be early 2017. If you have any further questions, you can reach us at 922-8609. I do want to mention that our, we do send out early estimates, they are only an estimate, so normally we veer toward the higher side.
Okay, Ron, thank you for the explanation. We'd like to open the hearing. All right? Thank you. Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-27, approve the opening of the public hearing for the 2016 construction, repair, or maintenance of sidewalks, curbs, and gutters along various township streets.
I move motion 2016-027, opening the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Now, are there any public comments regarding the sidewalks, or any questions directly for Ron? Yes, sir? Could you come forward and identify yourself? Thank you.
My name is Alfred Ludwig. I live on 5179 Kincaudine Drive, and that's on the corner of Welland Drive. And the sidewalk in question, it says that there is a raised section and a sunken section. This is on the Welland side of my property, and it is adjacent to another property. The water has been running between our two properties down the hill from all the properties up from Kincaudine, I'd say 10, 12 pieces of property for 50 years, and it has disappeared underneath the sidewalk. My suspicion is that the reason the sidewalk sank, didn't raise, it sank is because the dirt is washed away underneath it, and for 50 years, there might be a cave underneath it. So if there's any way to check that before you proceed with work, which I have no problem with, would be wise to do that.
Ron.
And it's, it's all the way from the telephone pole on the corner of my property, south on Welland Drive, all the way to the field. That whole area is sunken. And, so please take a look at it.
Ron.
The best thing to do would probably be call the number on the estimate we sent you, and then we can get your address and stuff and look into that.
The property behind me?
Yes.
I know the people's name, Martinelli. It's an elderly lady, and there's a big old oak tree in front of it, and it's the only house that is behind me on 5179 Kincaudine Drive. If you want to come out there and take a look at it, you may call me, and I'll be happy to assist you.
That'd be fine. We, we normally have to meet with a lot of residents during stuff like this.
Some light pipe or photo equipment that you can look down underneath the sidewalk, or sonar equipment might be helpful.
We can definitely take a look at it.
Okay. Now, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. All right, then I believe we can approve the closing of this public hearing.
Motion 2016-28, approve the closing of the public hearings for 2016 construction, repair, or maintenance of sidewalks, curbs, and gutters along various township streets.
I move motion 2016-028, closing the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Reports from department tonight, I have Mr. Landrum.
Thank you. Couple of announcements. First is a congratulations to the Delhi Township firefighters for being the fastest firefighter team of the American Lung Association Fight for Air Climb for the fourth straight years. And they also led the firefighter teams fundraising by bringing in $3,253. So congratulations to the firefighters. You know, just to brag on some of these times, Ben Pritchard, firefighter Pritchard, how many years has he won this thing, chief?
I think this is at least two.
Well, I know he won last year, but I...
Yeah, this is two.
Two?
Yeah.
Eight, eight minutes and nine seconds going up, now get this, going up 45 floors, over 800 steps.
In full gear.
In full gear.
So next year, his nickname's going to be the elevator.
The, the second, the second place was 34 seconds behind him. So he beat him by over a half a minute. Now, Ben, congratulations to him, but let's see, out of the, we had eight guys competing, and we filled eight of the top 12 spots. So there's only four other people in the top 12. So Nick Conklin finished third, Dan Albert's fourth, Chris Hauptman fifth, Scott Summers seventh, Jesse Crook ninth, Wally Russell eleventh, and Anthony Moffeta twelfth. So...
The cool thing is, those are full-time and part-time personnel. They work all unit days, so it wasn't like one crew got together because they worked together on the same rotation. They, all walks of life here, so it's a good representation of the department. And then the biggest thing of all is, they were the highest-funded firefighting team. So not only were they the fastest, they brought in the most money for charity. So both big things. I'd like to bring them up at the next meeting.
That would be great.
Have them recognized.
That would be great.
I just got that email right before, and I said, well, I can't refuse to congratulate them right away, but we'll, we'll, yes, absolutely.
I think definitely, they can go into the details. It's, it's always superb, and they really kind of say, well, let's show off for the department, but it's, those faces you see out there, it's, it's all about them and the hard work and training over the months that they do it. So certainly, if we can get them up here at the next meeting, they, they really deserve it.
That's great. Well, we'll look forward to that, because I know that there were other fire departments who were watching for you. You were known as the competition to beat.
You, what, the thing I worried about the most was, you have, you know, local stations all trying to get an interview, and they usually jinx it for you, so it's like, I know why they wanted to interview them, because it's three years in a row that they're winning as a team, but, you know, they pulled it off a fourth year in spite of that. So my, you know, my, my kudos out to them. They're, they really did a fabulous job, represent the department well. If anybody caught any of the news footage, any of the links on Facebook, certainly, it's the best of the best. That's what you have.
Lieutenant Dan with the look of the deer in the headlights.
Yeah. It's a little freaky to be on camera when they have to cut away, and then they have to come back, and you have to remember what you're going to say. And, and, you know, I know when, I can't do this job and speak publicly, I've got a good public information officer to kind of fall in line, so Dan did very well.
He did.
All right.
That's great. We'll look forward to seeing him at the next meeting then.
And I have one more thing. We, part of the, what's called a Planning Press, which is a publication of the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, part of their February edition, Delhi Plans for Changes on the Pike, and it also is their first Frank F. Ferris the Second Community Planning Award nominee. So the plan itself has been nominated for an award. I've already gotten a call, I'm sure Catherine or Tom may have gotten calls, congratulations. You know, this goes out to, of course, the people in that business and that line of work as far as the planning and development. So that's just more verification that our plan's a good one, it's been adopted by the Planning Commission, it's been adopted and approved by them, so that helps the project as well. So congratulations on that.
Great job. Great job. All right, then, reading of the resolutions, Mr. Looby.
Resolution 2016-15, resolution approving purchase order obligations incurred on behalf of the township by the township administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-16, resolution authorizing execution and submission of the 2015 Township Highway System Mileage Certification, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-17, resolution declaring necessity and ordering the construction, repair, and maintenance of sidewalks and driveway aprons along various township streets without petition in connection with the Delhi Township Street Rehabilitation and Repair Project 2016A, establishing tentative assessment estimates against abutting property owners pursuant to revised code 5543.10, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-18, resolution of necessity for the Delhi Township Street Rehabilitation and Repair Project 2016-A, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-19, resolution adding the position of seasonal maintenance worker in Article 12 of the Delhi Township amended and restated summary of policies dated January 1st, 2014, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Ron? He's still in the lobby. You want to take it?
I'll fill in, batter up. This is a seasonal position, that is a seasonal maintenance worker, so this, this is a position Public Works will be able to utilize for the summer help when they are, you know, needing flaggers, needing additional help for the repairs of, of roads and things that they need primarily during their peak season of road work in the summer. So this adds just a seasonal, part-time position.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-20, resolution setting staffing levels and establishing pay rates during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
This does two things. One, we just talked about, this adds to the staffing level summary, adds a seasonal maintenance worker to that. And secondary, with what we just talked about with Fab, this will adjust the, basically the sworn officers for the police department to 31, from 29 to 31.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-21, resolution declaring certain police vehicles and equipment no longer needed for public use, and authorizing the sale to the city of Kenton, Ohio, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-22, resolution declaring certain police vehicles and equipment no longer needed for public use, and authorizing the sale to the Hardin County Board of Commissioners, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-23, resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute a service plan renewal with the Physio Control, Inc., for fire department equipment, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Chief Campbell?
Yes, thank you. Physio Control is the company that handles the warranty of all our cardiac monitors. When we first received the monitors through DHS grant, the one-year service warranty was covered under that initial purchase, and we entered into a service agreement for four years. So essentially, we had five years of coverage. The set amount was, over that five-year period, what they've asked us to do is renew, renew another service agreement that will go out and extend another four years. It includes things like the battery replacement, because you have to make sure that the monitors are able to charge and differentiate people, all the annual maintenance that they get in terms of making sure that all the intrinsic components are functioning. It's very technical, but it'll cover the three cardiac monitor, 12 leads that we have, as well as the three AED units that we have in service.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-24, resolution authorizing summer recreation programs, participation fees, employees and instructors entering into 2016 spring and fall softball coordinator service contract, authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to execute the contract, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Josh?
Thank you, trustees. We're happy to have the same three softball coordinators back. Nothing has changed from last year, it's the same contract, we're, we're happy to have that working relationship with them. It's been positive, so it's same business as old.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
This is Seavy. Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-25, resolution authorizing agreement with Jump Start Sports LLC for certain sports camps and programs within Delhi Park during summer 2016, authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to execute the agreement, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Josh Torbick?
Yes. Jump Start Sports is an organization we worked with the last couple of years. It's pretty much the same contract, except two additions this year. We'll be adding two spring and two fall programs, six-week programs, baseball and soccer for the little guys and girls. So, we'll have added programming this year. And then, as far as revenue in the past, Jump Start Sports has collected 100% of the revenue. This year, we'll be doing a 90-10 split with Delhi receiving 10% of the revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
I move dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions. I have no citizens' comments. Mr. Landrum? Okay. Announcement of community events, Mr. Looby?
The Delhi Historical Society has a family history scanning stations. There will be Tuesday, March 8th, 2016, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Bailey Wellness and Fitness Center at 990 Bailey Place Drive, and on Saturday, March 12th, 2016, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Delhi Branch Library at 1595 Foley Road. The Delhi Branch Library Program, Mary Ingalls, will be Tuesday, March 8th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. at the Delhi Branch Library at 1595 Foley Road. The Delhi Historical Society Program, Delhi Township Fire Museum Tour will be Monday, March 14th, 2016, will be at 7:00 p.m. at the Delhi Park Lodge at 5125 Foley Road. The Hamilton County Board of Elections, the presidential primary election, will be Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. The Delhi Business Association Easter Egg Hunt will be Saturday, March 19th, 2016, from 10 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. will be at Delhi Park at 5125 Foley Road. The Delhi Historical Society has two farmhouse exhibits, Delhi and Bloom, and the Language of Flowers. Visitor hours will be Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays from 12:30 p.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Mr. Looby, I think we skipped one. Go to number three and tell me if that's still active.
The Delhi Historical Society Program, Delhi Township Fire Museum Tour.
Did we read that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, because I didn't check it off. Good. They get a second hit. Everybody, go see the Delhi Fire Museum. Okay. We do have need for executive session this evening, but I believe we have a guest here in the audience from the Boy Scouts. Is that true? Okay, what is, what is your name and what is your badge? Michael? Hudson, and your badge is? First class? All right. Communications. Well, good, good luck with that. All right, then, may I have the motion, please, for executive session?
Motion 2016-29, to retire to executive session to consider the employment and compensation of public employees.
I move motion 2016-029, to retire to executive session to consider the employment and compensation of public employees.
I second the motion to retire to executive session.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Delhi Township Board of Trustees is Wednesday, March 9th, at 6:00 p.m. here at Delhi Administration. Thank you.